Good evening. Welcome to the December 19th, the meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. We welcome you tonight. We hope if you brought presents, you can put them under the, on the table. Otherwise, we'll open those later. In case of an emergency, well, no, everything is set up now. So, all the exits are available. So, I don't have to make that announcement again. Let us begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
(Clerk) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, do we have any minutes that need approval at this point?
Not for this one.
Not for this one, thank you. We'll move to the public hearing. The first public hearing is with North Cross LLC. Madam Chairman, did we notice, give a public, a notice for public hearing for this?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on December 11, 2024.
Okay, then I would motion, I would move for opening the public hearing on the North Cross LLC.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good evening, sir. Could you state your name for the record?
Yeah, Louis Kaufman for the applicant.
Okay. I wonder if you could start just by giving us a summary of what you're looking for.
Sure. Jeffrey Groves Estates is now known as North Cross Estates.
Can you move that microphone just a little closer?
Closer, okay. Is a 50 townhouse development. There is open space on the east and west side of the 25 acre parcel. In the open space adjacent to Blair Road, which is one of two roads, we have proposed an amenity area, and in that amenity area, we are requesting to put some benches, a bocce court with pergola, a gazebo with some, with a picnic table, and a dog, an enclosed dog area. They are within the 100-foot buffer zone to the stream, Indian Creek, or Indian Kill, I'm sorry. And so, we were requested by the planning board to come before you to seek a variance to allow us to develop it within the 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay. Is there a, ask for a variance, you named, you named three things. You named the gazebo, the park benches, and the dog run. Is there, and the, and the bocce, is there something else?
Well, there's a, excuse me. There's a trail that runs throughout the, that area.
And is that also a part of this?
Well, it was actually previously approved.
That was previously approved? So, that's not a variance that you're requesting?
Well, it is a variance, but retroactively.
So, retroactively, you're asking for the existing walk to be included in the variance?
Right. That's correct. Now, that, that walkway is merely a identified path made with pervious material.
Okay, all right.
And it was, it was on the site plan.
It was on the site plan, okay. I stand corrected. A number of us have, have had an opportunity to make a site visit. Let me back to the members of the board for questions. Questions?
Thank you for the, all the information that you gave us. It was really interesting. I mean, you know, the restrictions and covenants, deeds, covenants and restrictions, I thought they were, they were good. I was, being a landlord for 50 years, I was a little concerned that there wasn't really a vehicle for enforcement. I mean, yes, we say we're going to, but I know that what, usually you would have to like follow what the law is for a rental. But if you were to ever sell, well, that was another question. You're renting now with hopes of selling, or you're renting?
We are unable to sell. We have no public offering statement on file, so we are incapable of selling to a third party.
At this point?
At this point.
But that could change.
Well, there's a homeowner association which would apply to any, you know, type of development such as this. And that provides initially for the declarant, which is the landlord, to maintain the open spaces and in the future, and it's funded by the townhouse development, but we fund it because we own all the units.
Yep. Well, if we go to the sale portion, there didn't appear to be a way to pick the board. In other words, it's like the board just appears. You know, in other words, you would have to vote for the board and stuff like that. And I didn't see how that would be done in, in the covenants and restrictions.
I believe these are bylaws.
So, that's an additional document?
It's a part of it. It's attachment, yeah.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So, are you saying, let, clarify that, that there's a, there is no board?
Again, I have, I have concerns about these kind of developments that the organization is ineffective.
To enforce the regulations.
Yes. And I just, that's what I was looking at. I was looking to see, you know, what's, what's actually there. And I just, you know.
At this point, what, what is the, what is the facility or the means for enforcing any rules or regulations for the?
Like any other landlord tenant operation, we are in charge of our own property.
Painful.
Not so much.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, there, I would just say that, you know, you may want to look and just make sure that there is a way that the board can be established. Because once, once you sell one, no longer responsible to that owner.
I'm sure that would be within the purview and review of the Attorney General should we submit a public offering statement.
Like the public offering, yeah. Okay, good. You're teaching me. I like this, thank you.
We have no intention of separating the units.
There's also two areas that have the condominiums? No, is that, what do we call?
There are two public roads that have been accepted by the town, Blair Road and Daniel's Way. The townhouses are on those public roads. However, as we created a homeowner association, which really is not relevant now, because like I say, we're handling it like one property, that will, is in charge of all of the common elements. Now, the amenities that we are proposing to put in the open space area are common elements as, you know, as is the stormwater design and all of the other things that make up this development that are not a part of the individual townhouse lots, which was acceptable and approved by the planning board.
Okay. And the two, two things are, are not separate, they're part of the estates planning, or what is it?
The two things are the open space lots?
No, the, where the people live, they're not, they're not connected, is what I'm saying, but there's a lot of open land in between. Can they, can both areas, can both occupants use the amenities that we are considering here today?
Every resident of our development can use the common area.
It wouldn't be just one side versus?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Would there be a, a way to connect them so that they could walk on a nice path over?
Well, that would be nice, but it would mean I have to jump the stream.
Yeah, no. They're not going to get a permit to go through that DEC wetland and cross that area.
Okay. But we, we're allowing them to build in it.
They, they can drive over and park at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I understand, but we're allowing, allowing the building to take place in that weather. So, why couldn't you build a bridge?
Well, there's a difference. There's a buffer zone, which is where we're proposing to put the amenities, and that is land that's not underwater. And then there's the stream that essentially separated the units on both sides of that stream. And we don't have a permit to go across that stream.
There's also a FEMA flood plain?
Mm-hmm.
And they're very close to that. I don't know if they're in it, but, you know, have you marked that, do you mark that out? Or, I mean, are we concerned about that? No? Okay.
That would have more to do with the environmental review of the project. The planning board has already typed the amenities as a type 2. So, it wouldn't be a factor in your review here tonight.
All right, good. And the only other thing would be the, the dogs. I got, I got some concern about concentrating them in one area. I, I think they're better off, you know, you put in a couple of doggy stations around the park or whatever, and let people pick it up and walk around, I think they, you'd be better off than a concentration of the urine and whatever else.
Well, I, I don't share your concern. I find it difficult to imagine that the distance from the dog run to the stream, 43 feet, could be saturated with urine so as to pollute the stream. However, I, you know, I, we also intended to put, you know, refuse in, you know, a collection station there, which we would maintain. You know, we're going to maintain the apartments as they are apartments. We're going to maintain, we cut the grass, we do all of that. We are landlords and very proud of our property. We, we own another couple of properties in Dutchess County, and which I think are very well-maintained, and we intend to, this is a unique product to Hyde Park. There's not many like it, certainly not in Hyde Park. And so, we take pride in what we have. So, if you're concerned about the environmental, you know, yeah.
I look at what we do have, and we have Pine Brook Estates. I think that that is very similar. And, you know, there's not a doggy park, and people walk their dogs and clean up.
All right, so, do you have pollution issues with the dog urine there?
No, they don't have a doggy park. They don't, it isn't concentrated. It's dispersed.
Okay. So, just, I mean, I have a dog, and I live in a community, and when it's concentrated and the landlord is entrusted with maintaining it, it gets done. When the dog walkers are entrusted with their device, I find they're not as good at it. And I find dog poo in several walking areas, so, you know, but it's, it's all about that. We are pet friendly, and so, but, you know, it's entirely within, listen, you guys make that decision.
You and I disagree on, on the quality of what this doggy park will do.
Certainly.
But it certainly wouldn't stop people from leaving their poo there if they, if anybody else was around. So, it's, okay.
Right. And of course, if, if they're walking their dog near the stream, then it's more of a likelihood that the urine would get in the stream than 43, 43 feet away. But like you say, we tend to disagree on the effects of that.
Okay.
I'm satisfied. Site visit was informative to me, and thank you for your time. I have nothing further to add.
Paul?
No.
I have a concern in, as we looked at the, where the doggy park was going to be in terms of its location relative to the flood zone and the creek.
Forty-three feet.
Yeah, 40, 50 feet. And I know in the future that we're going to have, if we just look at our weather indicators, we are going to have times when that flood plain is going to be full and maybe even beyond that. And I have significant concerns about the location of that dog park. Is there another location that you've considered that you might put it as opposed to that one?
We would, but I don't think that would allay your fears. The dog run is, is a fence. The ground that it'll be is, you know, porous dirt, so I'm not sure that the flood plain would affect it in any way, shape, or form.
If the flood plain, if the flood plain is full, it's going to be probably covering that dog park.
Right. So?
So, that means all of that, all of, all of what's in the dog park is going to go down that creek?
You know, I'm not expert enough to describe.
I'm sorry?
I'm not expert enough to describe whether or not the dog run would have a material effect on the creek.
So, is there another, is there another location that could be considered for the dog park?
I suppose there is.
Okay. What I would ask is that you do consider that as another, if, if you could come back, look at that and give us an idea of a separate location. The other concern I have is from your description that maintaining the area while your, your, your company does maintain the area and you come in periodically to do landscaping and mowing, et cetera, there's nobody there full-time. So, the enforcement of any kind of regulation there in terms of that is really open to, I know we've had, we've had a public comment, I'm sure you've seen it, in terms of, do they have to, if a neighbor has a problem, do they have to call the police in to do, do something, which sounds like a little extreme, but?
Does the, do the police respond to landlord tenant complaints? I didn't know that in this town.
I don't know, but they would respond to a complaint.
It would be a neighbor, probably.
And a neighbor would say, would call the police, and the police would react to a problem with?
For noise.
Dog feces?
Yeah. I don't know if it would be the dog, but it might be noise, maybe bark in dogs, or whatever.
Understood.
So, then you're amenable to coming back next time?
No, I'd rather have you vote on what you want to allow me to have now.
Okay.
And we will determine if we want to return, but I'd like the board to act tonight on each of the amenities individually. And if they don't want to allow that, if they don't want to allow amenities for the tenants, then so be it. I, I don't want to delay this decision.
Sorry, just to clarify, so, the chairman has asked if you would consider feasible alternatives and come back to the board for the dog run. It's not your intention to do that?
No, I didn't say that. Yeah, I would like the board to vote tonight on whatever amenities they will allow. I would not like to delay that. If they don't want to allow or provide a variance for the dog run or any of those amenities, then that's what it is. We will consider, you know, whether or not we want to return at a future date, although I must say, I don't see how the concerns about the dog run certainly are going to affect it, but?
Well, certainly the board is entitled to request if you've considered alternative areas that maybe would not require those areas.
And the answer is yes. I will consider alternatives for any of the amenities, but that would be if you denied them.
Well, I would make a motion that we strike number three from the resolution.
Which, which relates to?
The dog run.
Okay.
And that we approve all the rest.
What was the last one?
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's up to the board. If the board would like to give the applicant the opportunity to review alternate sites for the dog run, you can hold this over to next month. If you'd like to move ahead and?
Mr. Chairman, can you just, your biggest concern with the dog run is the flood plain?
Yes.
So, it's 43 feet away from the creek?
Correct.
So, that's all?
It's closer to the flood plain.
So, how much water does, how much does it have to rain to get there 43 feet up to the dog run?
If you get an inch and a half of rain in 24 hours, you're going to probably get there, because the creek is fairly narrow at that point, and there is a lot of leak, feeding that creek. If you go back up and see where, where it's originally come from, you're going to get quite a bit.
I might mention, Paul, that there's a, there's a FEMA map. You could look at it if you wished, on the pon line.
Right.
I, I had a copy of it. My printer was malfunctioning, otherwise I would have brought one in today.
And it showed that the water could get 43 feet up?
Easily, yeah.
Not 40 feet up, but it would come 40, yeah, yes, yeah.
Are you, are you saying that based upon the distance from the creek?
I'm sorry.
A flood plain would be affected, not by the height of where that land is? Is that what you think is the, the determining factor?
That the flood plain, I, what I'm saying is, in the case of, of what we're going to get more of in terms of climate change, in terms of down, down, downpours, we're going to get heavy rain, inch, inch and a half in a shorter period of time. The flood plain is going to expand, and it's going to cover the dog park.
We're not in the flood plain.
I understand that.
So, it's your opinion, it's your scientific opinion that the flood plain will expand to cover the dog park?
Yes.
Okay.
Question?
Can you use the microphone, please?
He's saying, he's saying, if I understand correctly, he's saying that the dog park is not in the flood plain at this point. And if I say the flood plain is going to expand, you're saying it will not cover the dog park. And I'm saying, we think it will. Anticipate, yeah.
Sarah has a point here.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the documentation is showing that it's not within the flood plain?
Right.
I think it would be arbitrary to consider an expansion of that flood plain without having documentary evidence before the board.
I would agree. I would agree. But I still think we have the concern in terms of the location, the potential problems with that location.
Yeah, just phrasing it in terms of variances, though, the question is?
Right.
Is there an alternate location for the dog run that would not, or would obviate the need for the requested variance?
Okay. So, we have at this point?
A motion to delete that particular item.
A motion to delete section three of the variance which addresses the dog park. We have asked him to come for a, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, my suggestion is that if, if you are going to ask the applicant to consider alternate locations for the dog run, that you hold this over and deal with the entirety of the request and the application next one. That is my suggestion.
I, I would agree, although I think you, you.
Let me ask you a question.
I'm sorry?
The fact that, there's a couple of issues you're raising. The location of the dog run and an expanded flood plain and, you know, what am I supposed to address here? There's no scientific evidence of any of your concerns.
Mr. Kaufman, I believe that the issue now that it's, we're moving away from the flood plain, the issue now is that are there feasible alternative locations where you can cite that dog run that would not require or would obviate the need for the requested variance? It would be outside of the wetland buffer.
I appreciate that, Ms. Ryan. My question really is, we're trying to have an amenity for the benefit of the tenants, that they can enjoy the open space. And if, and I would like to be able to, to the extent that the board here will grant a variance, get the amenities that they are comfortable with. And if we determine that we want to attempt to put in the dog run, should that be the only amenity that you're uncomfortable with? We can come back at a later date. But I would, I, I don't want to, because then, because if you, you wait another month, and then I have to go back to the planning board, it's an awful lot of time and effort.
So, Mr. Kaufman, is it your intention to withdraw your request for the dog run variance this evening?
Only if you're not going to give it to me.
I mean, that's not how this is going to work either. You give the board the information that?
Why can't the board make a decision and say, we give you this, this, and this, and not that?
Oh, they can certainly do that. If you'd like to deny the dog run based on the fact that the applicant has not shown alternate sighting when requested, that is up to the board.
We can't, we can't just remove it from the resolution.
You would have to address it this evening.
Okay.
And deny if that is what the board chooses, or grant as requested as the board chooses.
So, we could vote individually for each of the variances?
Yes.
Okay, that's probably the way to go.
Okay.
What happens if there's a tie, though?
If there's a tie, then it does not get granted.
All right.
I will withdraw the motion to remove it from the resolution, and we can proceed.
We'll vote individually, yes. Okay. Any other?
No.
Paul? Are there any?
Ms. Ryan, can you amend that resolution to address the, is it, I think it might be beneficial for the board to see where they're going, and, you know, see if the, the sole issue is about the dog run. And if it is, in fact, only about the dog run, can you amend that resolution to reflect that you have considered all of the amenities and would grant a variance to all but the dog run? And you don't, and, you know, you can address why you're concerned about the, you know, possible polluting of the stream at the dog run and possible, you know, whatever it is that the board finds appropriate.
I appreciate your comments. Are there any other?
That is what we were discussing.
Oh, okay.
Are there any other public comments on this issue? Yes, sir? Ma'am?
Oh, excuse me, sorry. If you could just come up and speak into the microphone, it's for the record. Thank you.
Your, your name, please? Yes, Novia Corbin.
You want to move that a little closer to you?
Sure. Yes, Novia Corbin.
Okay.
Hi, so I, well, another late, I'm sorry, I had to leave work to come in, but I missed the beginning. I'm reading, and I'm just trying to understand, is this mainly about the, the dog park, or is it just like about everything? Because I'm concerned about the stormwater management basement, basin. Is that something that's going to also be considered to be done?
No.
Yes, it is, it is. That is another one of the, the post hoc variances that has been requested.
But that's built.
Yes, it's already there, the stormwater basin. This is to legalize that variance. It was depicted on their site plan when they got their approvals, but there, no variance was granted for it. This evening, if the board chooses, that would be granted to, but it is already existing.
Okay, because I guess I missed that first meeting, if there was one?
Okay.
Because my concern is that a lot of water flows through my property, and I know that pushes a lot of water through my property. And we, I've had a flood before because of so much water coming on my property, so I'm just worried that it's going to happen again, because I had to spend a lot of money to get that fixed and?
Okay, is it be beneficial if we knew your address?
Yes, I'm right across the street.
What's the address?
18 North Cross Road.
Okay.
Right across, so, everything is coming to me first before anywhere else.
Okay. Well, this isn't a variance to amend anything with the existing stormwater basin. Nothing's going to be changing with it, it is just there. This is just to legalize it formally.
Okay.
Could I ask, when did you have the problems?
This was, earlier this year?
This year?
Yes.
The stormwater basin has been sized to accommodate the increase in runoff from the impervious area.
On our property?
Yes. But then it runs through mine, so?
So, it's running into your property?
Yes. Directly from there, comes across the street and come right into mine first, before it goes to anywhere else.
Your property, are you part of this, this?
She's across the street.
No, she's not.
Across North Cross Road.
She's neighboring property.
On the other side of North Cross.
There's, there's like a driveway that goes in and?
Right, okay.
Yeah, there's a culvert that's, that's it.
There's a culvert that goes under the road.
And then it comes to my property, yeah.
I saw them doing the work.
Yeah.
So, the work that's already been done is not really accomplishing what it's supposed to accomplish?
No.
And we're asked to legalize the installation of the stormwater that appears not to be?
Well, it's, it's doing its job for Mr. Kaufman's property, it sounds like, which is what it was designed to do.
That's what he's required to do, yeah. That's it. So?
All right, but we're?
This is a private civil matter that you would need to work out between the property owners.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
They, they may be able to increase the size of it or decrease the, the outflow, I don't know. Who knows?
I mean, that's something for the planning board, certainly, to potentially consider, but?
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Let's move, let's, let's move on. At this point, then, no, no other public comments? Madam Secretary? Madam Secretary, there was, there was a one.
There was an emailed one that I distributed to you guys. It's rather lengthy and kind of goes off topic. I could just include it in the minutes that will be on the website soon.
Thank you. I think that's sufficient.
And that'll be available to the public.
Okay, all right.
Was that something that you had provided me?
Yes, that's the same one.
Thank you.
There being no other comments, at this point, I would move to close the public hearing on this. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, therefore, we have a resolution, but we are, in this resolution, there are seven elements in the variance, and we are going to address six of the seven. We are not going to address number three.
Oh, sorry, Dave. You will be addressing number three, and it's still going to be up to the board whether or not to approve or deny that request.
Should we do it for a separate, in other words, can we lump some of them together?
Well, I would suggest that as you go through the elements of the variance, if you find that any one of the requested amenities does not fit, you can do it at that time.
So we're going to, so we're going to vote on each one?
So I'll start reading.
Well, you can lump some, vote the ones that you would like to approve and indicate which one you intend to deny, if that is what you choose.
All right. Yeah, get ready.
Okay. Resolution to grant area variances for North Cross LLC, Jeffrey Groves Estates, Two Blair Road, December 19th, resolution 202313Z. Whereas the applicant has submitted an application for several variances to locate three park benches, a bocce court, a dog run, and a gazebo, the proposed amenities, as well as to permit grading work, a walking path, and stormwater management basin in the stream corridor. The project at property located at Two Blair Road, Statsburg, New York, identified as tax parcel number 616718328190. And that parcel is the, on, on, on built one?
Open space.
Yeah, open space, thank you. In the neighborhood district site. And whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled Overall Site Plan, Jeffrey Groves Estate, prepared by Fuss and O'Neil, dated September 12th, 2006, and on a plan entitled Sheet CS 101, prepared by De Stokosa. The plans dated September 3rd, 2024, last revised October 16th, 2024. And whereas the applicant seeks the following variances. So I will read them all.
Yes.
An area variance for the zoning law, section 108, I'm going to only read this once, 4 dot 3 G 2 A, to permit the installation of three park benches within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer to Indian Kill, where the benches would be 20 feet away from the Indian Kill. An area variance, according to the same section, to permit the installation of a bocce court within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer for the Indian Kill, where it would be 40 feet away from the Indian Kill at this closest point. An area variance from zoning law, same, to permit the installation of a dog run within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer for the Indian Kill, where it would be 40 feet away from the Indian Kill. Number four, an area variance, same zoning law section, to permit the installation of a gazebo within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer for the Indian Kill, where it would be 65 feet away from the Indian Kill. Five, an area variance for the zoning law section, same as before, to legalize the installation of a walking path already completed within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer of the Indian Kill, as depicted on Sheet CS 101, prepared by Dan Stoska. An area variance from the same zoning section to legalize grading work already completed within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer for the Indian Kill, as depicted on Sheet CS 101, prepared by Dan De. Number seven, an area variance from the same zoning section to legalize the installation of a stormwater management basement already completed within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer for the Indian Kill, as depicted on Sheet CS 101, prepared by Dan Stoska. Whereas in accordance with Town Code and State Environmental Quality Review Act, the planning board is required to determine the classification of the proposed project as lead agency. Therefore, on November 6th, the planning board, whereas on November 6th, the planning board resolved to determine it would be reaffirmed prior secret determination. Whereas pursuant to Section 239M of the municipal law, the project was referred to Dutchess County and was exempt from their review. Whereas a duly noticed public hearing was opened on December 19th and closed on December 19th. And duly public, duly noticed public meeting during which all those who wished to speak were heard. Whereas the applicable standards for considering the area variance were set forth in Town Law 267, Hyde Park Zoning Law, same section, which required the board to take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variances are granted as weighed against a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the general neighborhood and community of such grant. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals takes the following findings in accordance with Section 267B of the Town Law and Hyde Park Zoning Law, Section 108 33-6B 2, regarding the requested variances. I'm going to stop here.
Okay. So the first factor is the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. If you'd like to read the description, then I'll ask you if that, if those findings apply to the dog run as well. So if you read this first factors.
Proposed amenities will be installed within the interior of the planned community development and as such, will not impact nearby properties nor the neighborhood generally. Moreover, the proposed amenities will complement the open storage and encourage and enhance residents' experiences. The grading work storm basin, the walking path, also enhance utility of the site.
Okay. So I guess, will the dog run result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
So, I would say yes.
I don't think a head shake is a.
What are you saying?
Yeah, you can discuss. Yep.
No.
No.
Okay, so we have two yeses, two no. Okay. So. All right, the second factor is the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variances.
And sticking with the dog run.
This is, so.
Second page is more.
Yeah, I can read it out. The applicant has chosen the most logical areas on the site on which to install the proposed amenities within the existing open space. The grading work storm basin and walking path have already been completed or are existing and would be infeasible to relocate. So the question is, is the dog run, I apologize, the dog run, the benefit of the dog run can it be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variances? Including relocating it to an area that would not require the variance?
And that's a yes.
That's a yes.
Yes. No.
Okay, three yeses, one no. Okay, number three. The requested variances are numerically substantial. The requested variances will result in each of the proposed amenities being located fully or partially within the 100-foot stream corridor buffer for the Indian Kill.
Yes, they are numerically substantial.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Rich?
Yes.
Okay, all yeses, okay. All right, the requested, four, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The installation of the proposed amenities will not result in an adverse impact to the environmental conditions of the site and will have no impact in the general neighborhood or district as they will be wholly contained to the site. The grading work storm basin and walking path have had no adverse impact to the site or to the general neighborhood. So the question is, will the dog run have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay. Yes, two no. Five, the difficulties are self-created.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Finish that.
Okay. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following conditions.
Okay, so question, is the board, it sounds from the tally that the request for the variance for the dog run has been denied?
Yes.
So this section, it would be further resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby grants the requested variances and denies these single variants for the dog run?
Okay.
Subject to the following conditions.
Subject to the other, subject to the other two.
Right.
You want to read those?
Pursuant to Section 108-33 dot 5F, the authorized activity must commence within one year of the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked, and payments of law fees and escrow.
It is there, been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll? With the understanding that the six of the seven have, are included in this?
Yep, I would just request that we have a separate roll call, just to confirm for the dog run.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So the first is for the, is for all seven, are six, not including number three, the dog run.
Okay, Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNair?
Yes.
Now for number three, the dog run.
And this is, this would be a vote to deny the variances for the dog run. So if you are voting in the affirmative, you are voting to deny.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Donley?
No.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
No.
Chairman McNair?
Yes.
It's a tied vote, so the variance is denied.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you to the board for your volunteer work. Appreciate it. So I'll be building everything but a dog run. Okay, thank you.
Well, you can still build it, just can't get the variance. So you could build it somewhere you don't need the variance.
Well, it doesn't really, I mean, the only place I could put it is within that 100-foot buffer, so. But thank you anyway.
Thank you, sir. The next item is the enclave at Hyde Park, 1703Z. Is there a representative? There is. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published for this?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on December 11th, 2024.
Okay, good, I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, your name again, please?
Dagmara Drago, for applicant 54 Hyde LLC.
Good, can you tell us again, just briefly?
Requesting an extension of the variance to allow density to be decreased from 2.4 to, I believe it's 1.4 per acre.
Right, and this has been a ongoing slog. And I understand that you have now passed all of the requirements?
Yep.
Is there anything left?
We've been in contact with the town, the town engineer. We're trying to get our building permits issued at this point.
The building permits? So those have been, you have not, those have not been completed yet? You don't have the permits yet?
No. Not for the houses.
I'm sorry, not for the houses?
Not for the houses.
That's separate from this, but that's separate from this?
It's the whole development.
Yeah, okay, all right. Questions from the board?
No, we're very familiar with this project.
This one, how do we make out with the water? Do we have extra capacity at that site?
Right, so I spoke to the team and there were discussions about Molly Way. We are open to working with the town and/or county to see how they are able to facilitate getting water over to that area.
And you, so you do have extra capacity, that's.
Correct.
That was, that's the.
Correct. I mean, I think that we would have to, you know, not we, but the town or the county, whoever were to take charge of that project, would have to do additional studies. But, yeah, there's, there's adequate.
And your name again was?
Dagmara Drago.
All right, are there any other questions from the board? Is there any public, anybody from the public to make comments? Did we receive any written?
No, we have not.
Okay, I would.
Mr. Chairman, just before, I just want to let the applicant know that we, just as with the last extension, we did build in a condition of having a six-month update. So if in six months you feel as though you may need a further extension, you just have to write in and inform the board. As to the reasoning why.
I do not think we received last year, we had the.
No, we did.
No, we did.
We did.
We did, I apologize.
Yep.
Good, all right, therefore, we have closed the public hearing?
Just one quick question?
Sure.
What's the price range for these homes? They are for, they will be for sale?
Oh, TBD, exactly, TBD, we're still trying, I mean, we're.
And they are for sale? You're going to build them and sell them?
Like I said, that remains to be determined. That was the plan. But we're so far away from, you know, when we originally went to market, we have to do additional market study.
Okay.
Okay, so we have closed the public hearing? Have we? We did?
No, we need motions, please?
Oh, there's a motion, I moved, we closed the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board?
No, no, no.
You have to read the resolution.
Yeah, after we. Paul?
Yes.
Would you read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution to grant, a resolution to re-grant area variances, the enclave at Hyde Park, Cream Street, and Long Branch Road, Poughkeepsie, New York, 12601. Date, December 19th, 2024. Resolution number 17-03Z-7. Whereas on March 22nd, 2017, a resolution 17-03Z, the applicant 54 Hyde LLC was granted a variance to change the average density in the Green Belt District from 2.5 acres per dwelling unit to 1.41 acres per dwelling unit. The variance, in order to resubdivide 70.51 acres into 25 residential lots with 50 dwelling units, the project. Whereas pursuant to Section 108-33 dot 5F 1, the town of Hyde Park zoning law, any variance under which authorized activity has not commenced within one year from the date of issuance is revoked without further hearing or action of the zoning board of appeals. And whereas pursuant to. And whereas pursuant to section one-oh-eight dash three-three dot five F two of the zoning law, the zoning board of appeals may, in its discretion, after conducting a public hearing, grant an extension to a variance. And whereas, 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 on November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, the applicant submitted a request for a seventh, seventh extension of approval for the variance. And whereas a duly noted public hearing was held on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, during a duly notice meeting held by the zoning board of appeals, during which all those who wished to speak were heard. And whereas the zoning board of appeals has considered the circumstances warranting such an extension and has found that there have been no significant changes in the project or the project site, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a one-year extension of time in which to commence the activity authorized under the variance to December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And be it further resolved that the zoning board of, zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance extension, subject to the following conditions. Applicant shall provide a letter stating the status of the project and whether need for further extension is anticipated to the zoning board of appeals on or before June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, six months from the date of this extension. Two, payment of all fees and escrow. Three, pursuant to section one-oh-eight dash three-three dot five one, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it will be revoked.
Mr. Donnelly has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, now you can poll the board.
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNair?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't want to see you next year.
Okay.
No, you can come show us the house, house plan.
Yeah, show us the, the house plan, yeah, that would be good. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we now have the blah, blah, blah. Orkin, two-oh-two-four dash fourteen, fifty-nine Conley Drive in Stotzberg. Hi, good evening. Oh, here comes the guy that's gonna tell us what's going on.
We brought the cuteness, that's all.
Madam, Madam Chairman, have we, uh, had a public notice on this?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I would move for a public hearing, uh, to open on the enclave. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That was Orkin.
Orkin, did I say Orkin?
I'm Clay.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
You're moving.
Uh, sir, can you state your name for the record?
Robert Cavallari.
Okay, and you are the owner of the property?
My wife is.
Cory.
Cory Orkin.
Glad to see it's in good hands. Okay, can you summarize the project for us, sir?
Uh, we were, we put in, in, in ground pool, and the deck that's on the side of our house is basically old and starting to rot, as where it's over, well over twenty years old, built out of wood. We're trying to build it into trex, and we had the plan, I'm pretty sure you guys have the plan that I've submitted.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the lower part of the deck extends too far into the green belt, or the, sorry, to the side of the property.
Is there to that side of the, I'm trying to look at this now.
This is what I have here.
Okay.
This is the property. This is them, and this is where they're going, that property.
Okay, so the, the deck is going to, um, try and get direction here, is this north?
It's a very odd-shaped lot.
Um, is your, is your driveway coming from the north?
I think the west.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's towards the...
At the west, okay.
Yeah, it's towards the west.
This is east, so your deck is going to be on the east side of your property?
Thank you. Yes.
That's correct?
Or south.
Right. Maybe I have the map upside down.
Okay.
This is their problem.
Right. Okay, so can you just, I'm, I'm looking at a picture of the property, but I...
All right, I was gonna extend.
Yeah.
Okay, so my, yeah, question, the deck is gonna be right here, which is right here.
Is it the deck?
Yes.
And where's the pool?
Here.
Oh, okay.
So you're gonna put in a pool?
What, what's here, right here? Is there a porch or something?
Um, okay, so, yeah, I guess the, the pool deck will really actually be here, so really it's, we're just like trying to extend it so it connects down to the...
Could it be a little narrower here?
So this, this is, this is going to, this is your outline of what the deck is gonna be?
Correct.
What's the distance between that deck and the property?
This is this...
What is that?
That's the, that's the variance.
It's sixteen feet, I believe.
Sixteen? Sixteen feet?
Yes.
Okay, now, question, that's this property, what is this property here?
It's a forest preserve right now.
It's the green, that's the green belt of Hyde Park, for Hyde Park.
This is the green belt here.
Well, you're in the green belt district.
Yeah, everybody, everybody's in there.
There's a forest preserve.
It's a forest, it's a...
Yeah. If I show you this picture, it's a little bit easier to see, because this is our neighbor's house, that's our house, I'm, I'm sorry, this is the neighbor's house, this is where our house is.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Yeah, use the microphone.
Okay, sorry, this is the neighbor's house, this is our house, there is at least an acre woods through here, but this whole back property is all, the only other thing it says there is town of, uh, town of Hyde Park, green belt.
So it's vacant property, it is, it is owned by somebody, and there have been previous development plans proposed there, but they have not gone forward, and there's no current proposal for it.
That's the hundred acres or something?
Something like that. The owner has part of it, I think, under a forestry management plan, and he's looking at some other potential for an agricultural use.
Rosika, owner of the Autumn Ridge LLC?
Yep.
LLC that owns that property?
Yes.
Okay. And the objection there is...
It's too close to the... Who's the objection?
Yeah, we, just so you know, we did receive correspondence from the owner of that forested parcel, uh, in opposition to your request.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's what they're reading right now.
Okay.
Here's a second copy.
There, there isn't really a good plan view of the thing for us to look at, you know? I understand what we're doing, but...
Microphone?
Yes.
Here you go.
The plan, the plan view is, you know, like this little chalk thing? I mean...
Can I go back up?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, the, the picture from the sky is nice, but it's nice to have just the outlines of the, the building and stuff, but if your pool's over here and you've got a deck around the pool, are you gonna connect it? Is that what you're trying to do?
So basically, there'll be steps down from, this is two decks, 'cause there is the double sliding glass door here that's up in the air, so it'll be there to the end of the house, and then there'll be like four steps down, and then there'll be this other deck that's right here, and this is where it comes to the sixteen feet.
Okay.
Is this gonna, are you having another deck around the pool?
It's hardscaped, it's stamped, it's hardscaped, uh, stamped concrete, the pool's in, and...
Okay.
So could, could you go this way with the deck?
Uh, not particularly, we have a, um, that's part of where all the hardscaping is for the...
And how, how many steps down?
I think three.
So you would lose the use of a little bit of the hardscape?
Yeah.
Okay, and we don't know what this property's gonna be developed, the vacant property at this point?
Or if it ever will be, we do not know. There's no concrete plans to develop it at this point.
All right. Other questions?
No.
Is there anybody from the public here for this comment? Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, no.
You all right? I mean, you're clear?
I would have liked to be a couple feet here, but this way, you know?
So that would take, that would take six, maybe six feet, maybe. They were still, they're still in the...
Right, right.
Okay, all right.
Well, like four gets this to twenty.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, you know, I'm saying, like, something like this.
Okay, other questions?
Nope.
Anybody?
Nope.
Counsel?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, uh, there being no other public, uh, we have, we have, we have the one public comment which has been entered into the record?
Um, yeah, I've distributed it to you, and I can include it in a minute.
Okay, all right, so there being no other public here, uh, comments, I would move to close the public hearing?
A motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. We have, I think, a present...
But closing the public hearing on one meeting, again, I, mine is a no. Just on closing the public hearing. I like to have the public hearing stretched a little bit so that people have, I was once burned by the fact that I'm not getting noticed, and that, uh, if somebody is on vacation or they're getting ready for their Christmas holiday, you know, they're not here, they may wish to be, but I don't know, so...
It was clear that, that the owners around there were notified.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that as for closing public hearing, I, if it's only, he, see, if we only see it once, I probably will always vote no. If we see it twice, I'll be voting yes. Yeah, no big deal, just, it's...
You want to have it on the record?
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay.
So just, just to clarify for the record, on the vote to close the public hearing, it's three yeses, one no from Mr. Perkins.
Can I just clarify something? Can the person who seconded in the motion to close be the one to oppose? That's not a conflict?
Not typically.
Okay.
I thought I overheard somebody doing it at the same time as me.
Oh, okay, who, so who else can second besides Rich, just to avoid anything? Oh, you, you were the first, Jerry, you can't be first, that's like...
Second.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Paul.
The public meeting has been closed.
Yes.
Therefore, we have a resolution before the board, um, Corinne Orchun?
Yes.
Got it right the first time. December nineteenth, two thousand four, resolution twenty-two-four-fourteen Z. Whereas the applicants, Corinne Orchun and Robert Cavallari, on behalf of the property owner, Corinne Orchun, have submitted an application, an area variance, to construct a new replacement deck attached to the existing single-family dwelling at the property located at fifty-nine Conley Drive, Stotzberg, Illinois, New, yeah, Stotzberg, New York, twelve-five-eight-oh, identified as tax parcel six-two-six-six-oh-one-fourteen-nineteen-twenty-three in the Green Belt District. And whereas the project is depicted in a drawing submitted by the applicant dated November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law section one-oh-eight-five-point-fifteen to permit a side yard setback of sixteen feet where twenty-five feet is required. Whereas the pursuant to six, NYCRR six-one-seven dot five C seventeen, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence is type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is not subject to review under the act. Whereas the duly noticed public hearing was held on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, during a duly noticed meeting during which all those who wished to speak were heard. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section two-sixty-seven dash B of the town law of Hyde Park, zoning law section one-oh-eight dash thirty-three-point-six-B-two regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be detriment to nearby properties. The house is set back far from the street on, on the two, on the three-point-seven-acre lot and is further insulated by undeveloped woodland. The benefits sought by the applicant, number two, cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicants to pursue other than an area variance. The new expanded deck will replace an existing deck. There is no change in the location of the deck, just expansion of the size. The deck is located on the most logical area of the site. Number three, the requested variance is not substantial. The requested variance from two-thousand, twenty-five to sixteen feet represents a thirty-six percent reduction in the side yard setback. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The new deck is not visible from the street or nearby residents and will not impact environmental conditions on the property. Number five, the difficulties are self-created. It further resolved that the board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance, subject to the following conditions. Payment of all fees and escrow, escrow, uh, pursuant to section one-oh-eight thirty-three-five F one, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise this variance is revoked. I have made this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
I'm gonna be a no.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
And Chairman McNair?
Yes. Uh, resolution...
Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen, and girls, sir.
Thank you. Uh, we have one more issue, and that is the Morton Family Forum, the Family Farms, two, two-oh-two-four-fifteen Z, at eleven Vanderbilt Lane, Hyde Park. Is there somebody here representing there? Acrued, thank you. Uh, Madam Secretary, was a public hearing notice published?
Yes, it was in the Poughkeepsie Journal on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I would move for opening the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, good evening, and welcome. If you...
Give us your name, please.
Great, hi, James Hartford from River Architects, David Schaefer, who's representing the owner, and Jane, who's also from our office, sorry, Jane, stole your, stole your fire.
Good evening.
Hi.
Tell us a little bit about what you're...
What was the architectural firm's name?
River Architects in Cold Spring, yep. So, uh, we're, we've got a, a project where we're, uh, doing, uh, a poolhouse and other things that are unrelated to this, uh, particular matter. Uh, what we're working on is, uh, what we'd like to request a variance is the, um, is the ability to remove a debris pile that was deposited earlier, we don't know when, but prior to, um, our clients owning the property, um, and it is within the one-hundred-foot buffer zone of the adjacent Bard Rock Creek.
Okay, LeCrumelble? The Crum Elbow?
No, Bard Rock.
Bard Rock. Oh, okay.
Bard Rock Creek.
But it's closed.
Okay.
So I think this is the buffer zone.
Okay.
And this is the debris.
Okay.
Maybe there's some more debris outs, there's some more debris outside than buffer zone also?
Yes, it's, the, the debris piles roughly 50% onto the, you know, kind of on that 100-foot setback.
What is the, what, what is the debris?
It's soil, it's rock, it's blacktop. You know, we, we haven't really probed it too much, but we have some photographs that gives you a sense of that.
It looks like there's a driveway almost that goes up to right where the debris was dumped.
Yeah.
You have, you have, could you share those? Paul, do you want to come over here?
Sure.
You go on.
So it's a little hard, somehow it makes less sense when you see what they're doing.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry, just turn those around.
Thanks, hi. So a little hard to see, this is looking downhill, it's kind of right there. Here you can see kind of the side view and you can see a rock and some of the blacktop here, so, yeah, so this, this one is looking from here, pretty much. This one is looking from this side and this is kind of a blow up of what you're seeing on that side. Yep.
So it's all, all of this?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. I'm going to take that out.
Yeah. And here you can see it in the distance there, there's some brush below it. You can see how the trees are getting buried into it a little bit.
Oh. Somebody just dumped it there?
Yeah, yeah. You can see it, just the shape of it is just like a...
Did you remove all those trees too?
No.
Not necessarily. This is an ash, it got, it looks like it's dead already, so we'll probably take it out. But, you know, that's, I mean, that's just, I'm sure it's dead from the emerald ash borer.
The purpose of doing, you're going to construct...
Yeah, we're building uphill outside of the buffer zone and so that's currently being reviewed by the planning board.
Right.
But, but we wanted to...
Clean up.
Do this cleanup and that was identified as something that we need to come to, get a variance for.
Okay. Question?
These are very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Questions?
None.
Paul?
No.
Okay. Good.
Do you want to keep these or should I?
Uh, we'll hold on to them for the record if you don't mind.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the public? I don't think, don't see anybody here. Okay. No other questions?
And Kathleen, we didn't receive any other comments, written comments?
No, we did not.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I would, I would move...
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
There was something about a lot line revision too?
Yes, we're, we're in front of the planning board for, to eliminate two lot lines to consolidate into one single residential property.
Yeah, makes sense.
Nice.
All right. Then I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are you opposed again?
No. Not this time.
All right. We have, I think we have a resolution?
Resolution to grant an area variance on Morton Family Farms LLC, 11 Vanderbilt Lane, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, December 19th, 2024, resolution number 2024-15Z. Whereas the applicant, David Schaefer, on behalf of owner of Morton Family Farms, has submitted an application for an area variance to complete restorative grading and debris removal, the project, at property located 11 Vanderbilt Lane, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, identified as tax parcel number 6065-02-834724, 6065-02-86278, and 6065-02-827709 in the Green Belt Zoning District, the site. And whereas the project is depicted on plans entitled Bard Rock Creek, prepared by River Architects, dated 22 October 2024, the plan. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108-4-3G2A to perform grading work within a stream corridor setback of 56, 56 feet, nine inches, where 100 feet is required. Whereas pursuant to six New York CRR 617.5C17, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence is a type II action under State Environmental Quality Review and is not subject to review under the Act. Whereas, whereas, therefore, number one, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The applicant wishes to restore the natural contours of the site and return it to healthy native forest environment. No permanent structure is proposed within the buffer zone and proper erosion control measures will be taken, maintained until grade is naturally stabilized. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The debris area is, is already within the buffer zone and removing it would require work within the buffer zone. No alternative other than leaving it in place is possible. Number three, the requested variance is not numerically substantial. The work is not substantial, but is in fact restorative. The area of dumped fill is approximately 3,000 square feet and is approximately 60 feet from the stream bank and its closest point. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Restoring the natural contours, removing unstabilized fill, and removing unnatural materials from within the stream buffer zone will, in fact, be restorative. Proper erosion control measures will be taken to prevent excessive silting of the stream. Number five, the difficulties are not self-created and as the dumping was done by others. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance, subject to the following conditions. Number one, pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. And number two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Uh, the motion has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll, please?
Yes. Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Have a good time.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck. It's going to be an interesting project. We look forward to following that.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam, and sir. Is there any other business before the board?
No, sir.
Therefore, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I would like to wish all of us, particularly, all of us...
Sorry, I thought you were going to say Merry Christmas, one and all.
Merry Christmas, one and all. And I hope we get time to take some, take some time off.
Quick question.
Ms. Tad, thank you very much. Thanks, Kathleen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody know what those, are those transformers that were up by the old police station? Anybody drive by there?